Agenda, are there any additions to the agenda?
Administration has no additions today.
Thank you for that. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda? Oh, did you have an addition? Sorry.
I would like us to perhaps add arbitration.
Arbitration? Sure. Bill's been away for a while, so. So do we want to... Do we want to add that to GNP or do you want to add it to the actual regular council meeting?
I would like to have a statement at this regular.
The regular council? Okay, so do we want to have it as in a decision item or as?
Perhaps if you could just fill me in if there's been any action done while I was away in regards to getting in contact with minister.
There was a letter that was sent and I will hand it over to Mr. Osman to see if there's been any other communication from administration on the county side.
So in terms of communication with ministry, in addition to the letters, we have spoken with Michael Scheidel, who is with Municipal Affairs, deals specifically with intermunicipal relations on a couple of matters, but I believe that's the extent of what administration has had for contact.
Okay, then I still would like to have it added as a agenda item.
Okay. So 8.7? 8.7 arbitration? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda with the addition of 8.7 arbitration? Deputy Mayor McGee?
Madam Chair, I would... The motion would read that we adopt the agenda.
Perfect, thank you for that. All in favor? That is carried. Are there any corrections or amendments to the March 2nd, 2022 regular meeting of council minutes? No corrections. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the March 2nd, 2022 regular meeting of council minutes? Councilor Kamana, all in favor? All in favor? That is carried. And we will move into our public hearing. Just have to find it here. So I will declare the public hearing open at 9:04 a.m. for bylaw number 2022-02D, rezoning bylaw. Those present for the public hearing today are myself, members of council, administration, and members of the community. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments, concerns, and questions from the public regarding the proposed rezoning bylaw 2022-02D that will rezone 502948th Street from R-SML Residential Small Parcel District to S-COM Special Community Service District. Administration received an application to rezone the parcel at 502948th Street from R-SML Residential Small Parcel District to S-COM Special Community Service District to accommodate the reestablishment of a church, provide for funeral home services, as well as for the hosting of weddings and wedding receptions. The noted uses are not provided for in the R-SML District where the proposed development is to be located, hence the need to rezone the property to S-COM. The applicant is hoping to bring new life to a historical building while preserving its character and the cultural heritage of Drayton Valley. The above bylaw received first reading at the March 2nd, 2022 regular meeting of council and may receive second and third reading today, depending on the comments received at this public hearing. Notification of the bylaw requesting comments from the public and advising them of the public hearing has been provided in accordance with Town of Drayton Valley Bylaw 2018-07A, Electronic Advertising Bylaw. To facilitate the public hearing process, any comments received, written or verbal, will be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. I will now call for comments from administration.
Thank you, worshiped council. Administration received five comments. The first comment is from Nolan and Shelley Westhaver. "We are concerned about a crematorium being in a residential area. We do not support a crematorium within feet of our home." "We have concerns about concealment of bodies as there are children all around the church frequently as they are brought in for embalming in the absence of a garage." "Thank you for your consideration." Second submission is from Russell Hogan. "I'm opposed to a funeral home being put in the Old United Church." The third submission is from Pam Baker. "I am writing in support of the rezoning of the Old United Church. I attended the church for over 30 years. I am happy to see the building given new life and a new purpose in our community." The fourth submission is from Heather Malin. "I've been asked for my opinion on how changing the existing church at 502948th Street would affect the value of homes in the area. If it was changed for a funeral home, that would also provide services for weddings and receptions. For all the years that the church was active, they too had funerals and weddings and receptions, so I can't really see how there would be any difference. I was married in this church. My mother's funeral and reception was in this church. It's my opinion as a realtor, nothing is changing, and this would not affect the property values of homes in the area." And the fifth submission is from Lola Strand, basically advising us that they have been in discussions with the applicant regarding negotiating an agreement for parking, and she's satisfied that they'll be able to come up with an agreement. That concludes the submissions, the worshiped.
Thank you very much for that. I'll now call for comments from the floor. Did you... Did you want to come down to the mic, please, just so everybody can hear you? We do have a few... That's okay, we have a few people online.
So is it going to be funeral services? Because funeral services and funeral church is totally different, or funeral home.
So today, this is for the rezoning of the land. Ken, did you want to come down and possibly answer any questions? And outline the designation for the applicant?
At this point, it's an application for a church, religious assembly, a funeral home, and entertainment services.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the floor? Did you want to come down? I'm sorry, what was your name again? Michelle Snow.
Is that good?
Good morning.
Morning. I have this draft. I believe it's been circulated to all of council. If you would like, I would be happy to read it. Shall I go ahead and read it?
Sure, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Council, Administration, and fellow residents, I am the... A little bit nervous, so give me a second off. I'll get my wind here.
No worries, take your time.
I'm the Director of Operations for Drayton Memorial, and I appear on behalf of Colleen Secura, who is at a national funeral convention at the moment out of the country. The building at 502948th Street has been operating in this location for 65 years as a church. Our proposed use is pretty much the same as it's been for all that time. The main church opened in 1957 and operated until 1988, when the onsite parking was removed and additional building space was added. It operated that way for 30 years until the United Church of Canada closed it. It's been vacant and deteriorating since then. Most, if not all, the houses in the neighborhood came after the church, so this is not new to the area. The value of repurposing... Sorry. Currently, the building, we went through that, the zoning, but unfortunately, there is a stigma when you mention funeral homes. This is still a topic many people find uncomfortable. However, funerals are a fact of life, and we do need to address it at some time. For most of it, though, as though later is a much better time. Many communities have funeral homes in residential areas, and some close ones that I know of are in Laduke and Edson. They're appealing and always kept clean and tidy, not at all a detractor to the neighborhoods. However, our plans include installing a garage door at the back of the building so that our funeral vehicle will be parked inside. This will reduce the constant reminder that we are a funeral business. We're more than happy to discuss with any of the neighbors on how we will function. We will offer tours during our construction and renovations so that everyone can share in the rejuvenation, the excitement of the rejuvenation of an old building. It's a place we want people to be happy to come to for many, many reasons. The value of repurposing an existing building has many benefits. It can't be argued that this is quite a unique building and has few uses other than what it was designed to be. The cost to demolish would be very high due to the age of the building and some of the building components that are in it. These components, if moved, are difficult to be recycled. So the likelihood of it going to a landfill and the likelihood of it being demolished is very low. As time moves on, the building will come into further disrepair, if not repurposed. Currently, we're seeing signs of mold inside the building and water has penetrated the inside. The current owners are not interested in continuing to repair the structure, and now that it's been started, the deterioration will happen faster. As it becomes increasingly rundown, the likelihood of vandalism and squatters, et cetera, increases. Property values will be affected if the building shows more age. Our purposes, our proposed purpose for the building, in my opinion, would have the least detrimental effect to property values of any proposed so far. Why here? We believe this building needs to be preserved as it's part of Drayton Valley history. Firstly, it's a beautiful building and a great place for weddings, funerals, and other events, and they've been held there since 1957. A funeral home is a reasonable alternate use. It utilizes the structure on a more regular basis rather than just during ceremonies. We can provide service like in the days of old, where you have the service upstairs, then go downstairs and eat your tuna and salmon sandwiches. We will help restore the community feel that we're all missing so much. We will set up with local catering companies to look after the preparation of meals for the funeral or wedding receptions. Now more than ever, people want to get together and be together. We're tired of no services, no wedding ceremonies, and funeral services to be held at a later date and then not happening at all. We recognize that people are social and they need to come together as family at important times in our lives. Doing it all in one venue just makes sense, doesn't it? Blending a funeral home and a wedding chapel means it can't look like a funeral home. It needs to be modern and upbeat. A funeral home has many smaller rooms that will lend themselves well to community outreach. The ability to offer meeting space for nonprofit groups of many sizes at no charge is a plan for us to utilize the building and gain some goodwill. The stigma of funeral homes is changing, and we want to be a part of that. We're going to call the building Drayton Memorial Celebration Center, and we'll promote it as a positive and even fun place to be. Groups like the 4H Club have their speech competitions in their own building that has a cement floor and really crappy acoustics. We would like to offer our building to them so that they can come and many assemble events. With our sound system and correctly sized rooms, it'll be great for the kids and others. It'll be a more positive experience, and they will enjoy coming to a building that will normally carry negative emotions. There are many groups in the area that could benefit from this type of a premise. As a mixed use, as a mixed industry facility, our decor will be modern and upbeat, not the type of furniture and decor you expect from a traditional funeral home. Remember, we're trying to appeal to brides. Some of them are a little difficult. This church has many happy memories for the people of Drayton Valley and area. We want to continue with that tradition and would hate to see the building turned into something other than what it was designed for. It was designed as a place of fellowship and happy times. We will continue that purpose. Of course, the elephant in the room is the parking. The biggest objection that's been brought forward is the lack of parking on site. However, we do need to remember the church has been there a long time, and somehow the zoning that's there now doesn't affect reflect the reality of what's there. The church has been one of the first buildings in the area, and all the residents in the area knew there was a church before they moved in. So parking, although certainly not ideal, hasn't changed. It's only very recent that services have not been held in that building, and our use as a funeral home isn't going to change much of what's been for 65 years. Having said that, though, we're very cognizant of the issue and have found ways to address it. We're discussing parking issues with the town, as Ken mentioned, and with the Scouts organization. I have a letter from the Scouts saying that they're happy to share parking with us. The Scouts have agreed to allow our guests' access. The town administration have agreed that we could use some designated parking areas around the town facilities as well. We're wanting to get formal agreements in place, and we will utilize as much parking onsite as possible, and only a limited amount of street parking will be required. Whenever we have a service, we will ensure that our attendants are monitoring parking and that driveways are not blocked, and that the residents have on-street parking available to them as well. We will work with the town and explore maybe even the possibility of us having some signs that we can put up on a temporary basis to assist allowing space for the residents to have their own parking. Although parking is not ideal, it needs to be remembered, it's been a church for 65 years, and parking hasn't changed. The building was built the same year Drayton Valley was incorporated as a town. I would suggest it's a part of Drayton Valley's heritage and needs to remain with the uses close to its original purposes possible. Funeral homes are generally, are usually generational and don't like to move. They're kept in excellent condition and not unsightly in a neighborhood. It's desirable that the people that have enjoyed the building for so long can continue to do so. It would be unfortunate to lose a heritage building providing a heritage-type service. The economic benefit, we're going to have three full-time employees plus several casual employees. Due to the nature of what we do, we'll be able to employ people with disabilities during services and that type of thing. We'll have seniors come in, which will help them get out and be involved in the public. People for weddings and funerals come from outside of town. We're hoping to have more of that and engage the local hotels and restaurants. Currently, we're seeing that Drayton Valley is underserved by the funeral homes. By a funeral home, there's more work than what the current funeral home can handle, and many people are starting to take their services outside of Drayton Valley. It's come to our attention that some of the national funeral home services have noticed that Drayton Valley is underserved, and it won't be long before another company moves into the marketplace. With us, it's locally owned, and we support the community, or it could be a conglomerate that takes their profits to the U.S. Drayton Valley Memorial is solely owned by a local resident that has made her home here for over 35 years and well-known for supporting community causes. In her former roles, Colleen Secura has always built bridges with the businesses in town. She plans to continue building and supporting Drayton Valley. Putting together wedding packages, utilizing hotels, restaurants, flower shops, et cetera, are all things that will help make Drayton Valley a wedding destination. Colleen is Alberta's longest-serving wedding commissioner, and she knows about weddings. She's done over 1,200 of them. In summary, Drayton Valley needs to build a community that is strong and vibrant with opportunities for everyone. Drayton Valley Memorial Celebration Center wants to be a part of the continued building of a great place to live and play. Our motto at Drayton Valley Memorial is "For the Love of Life." We all understand that funerals and weddings are a part of life. We want to make these events as painless as possible. We know that this building is a positive and a large part of many people in this area's lives, and we don't want that to end. Any objection to a funeral home is not an objection that has the best needs of the community in mind. Funeral homes are clean, well-maintained, and strong proponents of local charity and culture. Field directors and staff are sensitive to the stigma of our industry, and we do everything possible to reduce exposure to the business part of the funeral business. Like mentioned before, we will have a garage built into the building, and most activities will be conducted inside the walls of the facility. If not for the tasteful sign that will be put up, that of course we will get town approval for, before we put the sign up, a person would likely not even recognize it as a funeral home. The exterior will be freshened up, but the structure of the building will remain the same, and it'll look very similar to what it has for the last 65 years. Please support this venture. We will be good neighbors, and we know that Drayton Memorial will benefit our whole community. And in addition to that, I do have a letter from the Scouts and a letter from the town saying that we've been in discussions, and a letter from Heather Malin as well. If there's any questions of anyone, I'm more than happy to answer them. Any concerns from the other folks, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for that. I think we'll leave the questions for when we move into the decision items. Thank you very much for that. I will now call for any comments from anyone online. Oh, did you have a comment to the floor? Sure, come on down.
Good morning. I am Gloria Thomas.
Morning.
I guess my first comment has nothing to do with the church. It has more to do with information. I mean, I did not know that this was happening till I read that ad in our local paper, which was great. I stopped off here yesterday in the office to see if I could pick up some background information about what the plan is. I asked to see if I could have a copy of the bylaw to see what changes were being requested, and they did not have any. I thought there might be some handouts at the door, but there wasn't, but that would have been too late anyway. I couldn't take it home and read about it and think about it. No, I've been a member of that church since my kids were toddlers, so I do have an emotional attachment to that church. Heartbroken over what happened to our church, but it happened, and life goes on. So there is a need for something else to go into that church. In my mind, it will always be a church. And I also have some concern about our surrounding facilities up there. Now, we have a daycare that's going to stay. Our swimming pool is going to move, okay, so that's out. But there is the park there. You know, to have a facility for weddings and funeral services and whatever else they suggested is quite okay. But in my mind, a funeral home is more than that. It facilitates more like a morgue where they have to they have to keep bodies and stuff like that. And I compare it to our funeral home down on 50th Street there. Like, they have a place to park their hearse and stuff like that. I do not know what the plan will be in in that facility, like where will they park their hearse? And yes, we have had funeral services there before, and people park all over the street because the property does not have does not have parking. So I don't suppose parking will be any more like it won't be any more demanding than it has been in the past. But as a funeral home, they're going to have their own vehicles, and where will they park? And yes, our other funeral home is in a residential area, and it has not created problems, but that funeral home was there first. We moved into town when that street was being built. That funeral home was first. The houses went down, or almost first, maybe not the first, but almost first. So my request would be to postpone this and give the public more time. I would like to read that report, because I do have problem hearing, so I missed a lot of what he said. But I would like to take it home and read it and think about it, because I don't form opinions very fast. I have to read about it, think about it, read it again, and think about it again, and also talk to other people. I mean, I had no idea that this was happening till I saw the ad in the paper, and I could not pick up any information. So I really do not have a strong opinion as to if it should go ahead or not to go ahead. But I would like more time, and I would like more written information so I can take it home, read it, think about it, and discuss it with other people. Oh, and about other developments, there's many examples, and I can give you addresses, of when a church has shut down, what it's been converted to, and some of it is housing. My friend lives in Irocanah, just outside of Calgary, and there's a church on that particular street, where there's a house on that particular street that was a church, and you can't even tell. It's been converted to a house. You can't even tell it was a church. And so there's many other examples of what that church can become. And housing is one of them. You could put a, well, probably a fourplex in there. You can put a duplex for sure. Can become more of a community center, and I know we have lots of community centers, well, not lots, but we have some. But, you know, it could be like a service center for our community of sorts, and that would take planning. It would take some good ideas. But we have not had the time. Now, true, the church has been empty for a good many years, and nobody's done anything about it. So I don't know. But my complaint is lack of information to take home and think about it and talk about it, and I would request that we have more time.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any other comments?
Hi, Richard Snow. One of my things I need to address is when he said, "For now," when he said that it's just going to be for funeral services, funeral home, wedding services for now, that leaves it open that it's going to become a crematorium, which I was told it's already in the works to be and planned to be a crematorium. But it seems like they're being deceptive to the town, not letting people know that it actually is planning to be a crematorium. So I just wanted to let that be out there.
Thank you for that. Are there any other comments from the floor? I'll call for any comments for anyone online. No comments, anyone online. I will declare the public hearing closed at 9:30 a.m. This will be coming, if those of you that want to stay, this is a decision item 8.1, further down on the agenda here, just after our delegation, so there'll be a time for questions to administration and more open discussion, just so if you want to stay. So right now, we'll move into our delegations. Our first delegation is 6.1, and that is the RCMP Stats, February 2022, Ryan Hotmer. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. How are you guys this morning?
Good, how are you?
Good. So Aaron's enjoying the nice beaches at Costa Rica.
Nice. Lucky her.
Normally, I'm in charge of your guys' GIS team, so serious crime, drug enforcement, and or drug trafficking and property crime enforcement's my thing, but... or drug trafficking and property crime enforcement's my thing, but happy to bring the stats to you today. Everybody got a copy of them, I think?
Yes.
So the biggest thing I noticed when I looked at that is kind of that our persons crime is up thirty-two percent over the last two months from last year. And I dug into that a little bit. That is mostly kind of domestic-related, and it seemed to be not necessarily assault, but more on the harassment side, which we're not really sure why that is, but it's not like random. It's kind of domestic and almost more cell phones and the constant contact and refusing to not contact. That's kind of the biggest thing I noticed with there. We did see an increase as well in our motor vehicle thefts. That was January. We actually put a guy in jail mid-January, and then we watched him drop from, I think it went from like thirteen to three in February. So that's always the way it is, is kind of who's out at the time. We picked a guy off kind of mid-January, and suddenly we saw that fall. So we're hoping that stays the same for the next bit. The other thing you'll see there is the other criminal code, thirty-two percent increase. I think we're going to see that start to increase as town gets busier. That's lots of kind of disturbing the peace calls. We're getting more calls to our local bars. Even hotels are calling with the drunk guys at night, and those will get scored as disturbing the peace, which is criminal code call. And so we're starting to see, I mean, everybody can see it around town. I drive in the morning at like six forty, and it, there's vehicles like crazy everywhere. And I talked to the guys working night shift. They said they haven't seen it this busy, you know, one, two a.m. in a long time. Just, there's lots of people here. Our hotels, as you heard, are really full. We were trying to get a hotel room for a victim last week in the evening, and there's not one room in the town. So with that, with the big influx we see in town, we get guys out at night, drink until one a.m., and then we're going to see more of those calls at night, which will put a little more of a task on us, but they're also not heavy calls. It's just you're going to see that uptick there. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me?
Thank you very much for that. Owen, go ahead.
We talked about this, excuse me, a little while ago, about shadow population. So when we get, you know, extra folks in town, you know, we've got probably close to a thousand extra people in town. Do we adjust our service level at all in terms of, do we bring more people in temporarily, or do we have options that way? Or is that a need?
Sorry?
Or is that even a need? Do we have the capacity?
I'd say right now we have the capacity. Like I said, you're going to see the stats go up, but lots of these calls aren't super in-depth. A bar fight, for example, is not super in-depth. You know, you come, you split it up, you send them on their way. A drunk guy showing up at his wrong hotel, and the hotel calling us, and you have to figure out which hotel he's actually supposed to be at. It's not super in-depth. They just, the number of calls, and then you'll see those stats come up just because they're, they'll get scored as an assault, like a bar fight will get scored as an assault, but then it's really just a consensual fight where you split the parties. So we don't have any ability to bring in like specific resources for this unless we wanted to add, but we all know that process takes a while, so. But yeah, you're going to see our numbers come up, but like I said, they're not serious crimes, they're not super involved files that take a lot of time.
Any other questions? Tom, go ahead.
Good morning, Ryan. How long have you been in Drayton Valley?
Almost five years.
Okay. And are we in full complement right now?
We are, yeah. We are, but we're very young. We have eight guys, eight members, guys and gals, under a year. So, and we are, two will be moving out here, two have their homes for sale, and we're getting our last backfill in April to fill one of theirs. But then we're full complement, other than our supervisor staff. We're still waiting on our sergeant spot, and we have a corporal spot that's open. So our supervisors, we're down to about half of what our supervisor level is, but as the constable side, we are full.
And is the court system open again? And secondly, are you open? Have you changed anything since we've now moved past?
Yeah, sorry, we're full open, yeah. And just, yeah, come on in, no masks, we're full open. Courts are opening up, I think, next week. So there was some discussion whether they were going to stick to online, especially for their first appearances, but just because it's easier for the judges. But they've actually decided they're going to go back to open, which is good. I think it should be open, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the, good to see you, by the way.
Thanks.
You had mentioned an increase in vehicle theft and that there was a young fellow that, or a fellow that had been arrested. So did they get released, or are they still in jail?
He's held in jail. We actually did, my unit did a project on him, he was also drug trafficking, so we kind of, it took a little longer because we wanted to actually get him to something that stuck. So we had a few files, but then it took us about an extra week, but we got him with some, we got him with fentanyl, meth, cocaine, and so he's held. He should be held, I'm hoping, for four-plus years, but that's me, I'm an optimist, so.
So yeah, well, it's good to hear that, yeah, not being released again. And do you anticipate, or have you seen any changes to the judicial system when it comes to that kind of arrest and release and things that have been happening in the past?
We, I haven't seen that change yet. We saw a change with COVID to more release. I haven't seen a change back. And so we'll see moving forward whether we see that. I don't know. Aaron's in constant contact with Mark Smith, talking about the bail process. There's a committee there that she's on, and we're looking for change there. I haven't seen it yet, though.
Yeah, we had, we admit, excuse me. We had mentioned in the past, if you need any sort of advocacy or help, you know, when dealing with that or pressure or whatever, just let us know, and we're more than happy to help as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you again. We will move on to six-point-two, Drayton Valley Triathlon Organizing Committee, Sharon Oki and Derek Starnes. Not sure if you both, I don't know if you're behind the pole there, Derek, or who's coming up, or you are there? Yeah, if you want to come to the mic, or I'm not sure. Good morning, welcome. I think, as long as the green light is on, I think, yeah, you should be okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is, we've been doing this for about ten years now, the Drayton Valley Triathlon. A good opportunity for both local children, youth, and adults, and out-of-towners to come and enjoy recreation and also a challenging sporting event for those who want to actually race it. So this is something that we've developed over the ten years. We have asked for the last five or so years that the roads be closed for the bicycle portion. For those of you who don't know, I know I see a few new faces here. What a triathlon is, we swim in the pool, we bike on the roads, and then we run on the bike paths, or the running paths, whatever you want to call them, in town. The, I think the maps were all submitted. Does everybody, everybody seen those? Yeah, okay. That has not changed. This is the route that we have used for quite a few years now. It's, we haven't had a problem with this route, so we're going to stick with it. But it is important for us to have the road closures for a few hours on that Saturday morning to keep the, particularly the children, safe. Because if we have vehicles coming onto the road at the same time as kids on their bikes, it's just not a safe situation. Are there any questions about that, about why we need the road closures?
Thank you for that. Are there any questions? Go ahead.
Just one, I'm sorry you missed that. Are you with me or with Amelia?
Oh, you go ahead.
Want me to go ahead? All right, so when I look at the delegation request form, the triathlon committee will be hosting the provincial draft legal race. So there's a number of triathlons that go out through Alberta, so this is like a, you start here, and if you do well, you move up the ladders. Do I understand that correctly?
There's three portions to the race. Well, there's actually several different races that you can enter on the day. There's a children's portion, there's a youth portion, which is provincial level and is draft legal. So that means that instead of the bike being an individual effort, where the bikes just go on their own, the bikes can go in a pack, like if you've seen a bike race, like the Tour de France, where they're in what we call a peloton. So again, very important for us to have the roads closed for the youth race there because, and yes, it is part of a series for the provincial youth and junior series. They are points races.
Meaning qualifying, but the opportunity for kids to participate, I didn't get there in my read, but that's good that you mentioned that. That's tremendous to give them that opportunity, so, yeah, thanks.
Amelia, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. No, it's great to see that these events coming back, and we are getting started to the groove again. My question, you know, similar to Tom's, is I guess, is it pretty similar to the last ten years, or is there any changes on this time around?
No, we want to make no changes at all because it's been a couple of years since we've been able to run, so we don't want to try anything new. We want to just go with the tried and true, get out there and get an event done, because yes, I think everybody really is looking forward to being able to do this again.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilor Ballas, go ahead.
Thank you. My question is more to administration, and that'd be to Fire Chief Tom and Public Works Owen. Any concerns? Thank you.
I see head shaking. No, no concerns, thank you for that. And how many participants do you have already signed up for the event?
We actually just opened registration.
You just opened? So typically, how many do you get?
Between a hundred and thirty and two hundred.
And are you anticipating an increase now that we have restrictions lifted a little bit, or people are itching to get out?
We don't know. We're actually the very first triathlon of the season in Alberta, so, yeah, we don't know how it's going to shake out. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we hit our two hundred. Be nice.
Yeah, that would be nice. Well, thank you very much. There's no other questions, so we appreciate you coming this morning.
Thank you.
We will move into seven-point-zero, Business arising from delegations or administrative updates. So this is an opportunity to direct administration if there is any direction for RCMP stats or the Triathlon Organizing Committee. Does anybody have any questions, or are you anticipating that, or looking for a direction from council?
If there are no additional directions from council, just a motion to accept the reports for information.
Okay, did you need a motion or anything in regards to the closure?
I believe that comes up later on in the agenda.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right. Okay, so eight-point-four, so just now it would just be a motion to accept, then?
For information, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Is there a member of council that would like to accept the delegations as information? Rick, go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried, and we will move into our decision items. Eight-point-one. Mr. White, this is you. This is the United Church of Canada, site 502948 Street, Draft Rezoning Bylaw 2022-02D, presented for second and third reading.
Thank you, worshiping council. Administration received an application to rezone a parcel at 502948 Street from RSML Residential Small Parcel District to SCOM Special Community Services District. The subject parcel has been zoned residential since the previous bylaw in 1996 at least, and it's been home to the United Church since 1957. The applicant intends to reestablish the building as a church, offer funeral home services, and use it as an entertainment event facility to host weddings and wedding receptions. This mix of use is our exceptional example of adaptive reuse of a vacant building. When it's not being used for one use, it can be used, one of the three uses it can be used for, so it's got a good chance to succeed long in the future under this concept. The subject parcel is designated under the blanket residential zoning and map four of the municipal development plan. This proposal conforms with the municipal development plan. The land use bylaw, as mentioned, is a residential district that doesn't allow these uses, so that's why the applicant has applied to rezone to special community services to accommodate all three of the proposed uses, two which would be permitted, and the funeral home would be discretionary. As mentioned before, section 3.38 of the town's land use bylaw requires twenty-eight parking stalls, and the subject parcel does not appear to be able to provide that on-site. But the applicant has been working with adjacent properties to develop an agreement, and I guess at this point, we're talking about the zoning of the area, parking and other development issues, such as whether a crematorium, we can't speak, comes in, those will be addressed at the development permit stage, and because it's discretionary, it would be coming to council for a decision at that point. Administration recommends giving second and third readings to proposed bylaw 2022-02D. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Deputy Mayor McGee?
I have a couple of questions. One, the point of the crematorium, if in fact, I don't see it in the notes, but if in fact it becomes a crematorium, is that another zoning application or that kind of a thing?
No, Counselor McGee, at this point, administration know nothing of a crematorium. It's just the rumor they've applied for, under the districting as a funeral home, and those services that are described in the land use bylaw, the definition won't apply.
So if I decided as the owner to...
They wouldn't have to rezone. That would be a development permit issue.
And so that draws me to the point of, in 1996, we rezoned. And normally, would we not have blocked that off as a piece of property that is not residential? I think in ninety-six, it was a church, so why actually are we at the table today?
Yes, Counselor McGee, well, there's two ways that planning could have approached this, and one was to have an institutional zoning surrounded by the residential. That would have been the traditional and likely what was there from the inception. But I guess there's new planning, thinking back in maybe the seventies, sixties, that have a blanket residential where they then add religious assembly regulations and components in the residential district. That didn't happen in our new bylaws, so it wasn't allowed. So it missed on both accounts, I guess.
So today, we would circle those as...
Either, yeah, either, well, today, we'll have that one rectified, in that it will be a church zoning if it's approved, or we could amend the small residential holding or parcel district to allow religious assemblies, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Madam?
Thank you. Just to clarify again, sorry, I think you answered the question, but I just wanted to get it clear. So funeral home, crematorium, if a crematorium, that change is happening, there need to be a development permit, and because it's a discretionary use, does it need to come to council decision at that time?
Yes, it does. Counselor, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Ballas?
Again, just for clarity, under our old land use bylaw, we should have actually grandfathered the night church with zoning that it had at that time.
Yeah, Counselor Ballas, yeah, it should have been still designated as a... Yeah, Counselor Ballas, yeah, it should have been still designated as an institutional use, with an institutional zoning. In a sense, it was grandfathered, that with the new zoning, it's still allowed to exist as a non-conforming use. They just couldn't have renovated it or operated it as that, you know, so it's kind of, yeah, it's kind of grandfathered, but not with what they're proposing today.
Any other questions? Do you have any other questions? Tom, go ahead.
I'm just looking at my notes, and you're not asking for first reading, it's on the floor already, and we're looking for second and third.
We're looking for second and third today.
Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, just one other issue that I may have of concern, and that is the parking. Unless we make it as an amendment or a condition, because if we go ahead and just pass it as presented, there would be nothing in our ability to force them, to have them create extra parking.
Counselor Ballas, no, that's not the case. The zoning only changes the district and would give that, those regulations and uses powers. We still have the Town of Drayton Valley's land use bylaw, which regulates the parking. So when they apply for a development permit, which they'll need to operate, they can't operate without it, they would have to make some sort of arrangement to satisfy those parking requirements under the land use bylaw.
So this bylaw would not have to necessarily address the parking.
Not the zoning, not the zoning.
Go ahead, Rob.
If, maybe I can add for some clarity. So there's two processes. The one that's before council today is the actual zoning of the land. Once that's done, one of the uses that's contemplated in that zone is the one proposed by the applicant. At the time that they wish to establish that business, they have to make a development application. And so parking and a number of the other issues talked about here today are issues of the development application. So that all comes back to council at a later date.
Mila, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So about the parking, then, at the development permit level, the formula that we follow, then, they have to show that they have figured out that parking accordingly, right?
Yes, Counselor Gomano, they need 28 spaces.
If there's no other questions, I will ask a member of council to make a motion, please. Deputy Mayor McGee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would make a motion that we give second reading to proposed rezoning bylaw 2022-02D as presented.
Thank you for that. Are we doing two separate, I see them as kind of put together as a motion, we're looking for two separate motions? Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Is there any comment, question, debate on the motion? No, I would just like to add that I appreciate everybody's comments and concerns, and everybody coming today. As administration has said, this application here today is for an amendment to the lands, that's for the rezoning. So there will be a development permit application that will be coming in the future for the intention of this business, and that will give an opportunity for people to be able to speak. Adjacent landowners will also be receiving referral letters in the mail. That will give you an opportunity to respond to those letters again. It will come before council as it is discretionary. And as for me personally, for rezoning, I'm in favor of rezoning the land from residential to the proper designation. Any other comments, questions? No, then I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Can I get a member of council that would like to make a motion for third reading? Monica, go ahead. Thank you very much for that. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on the motion? No, the motion is that council give third reading to proposed rezoning bylaw 2022-02D as presented. I will ask all in favor, and that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, perfect, and we're moving on to our next decision item, 8.2, Metal Neck Site 5302, 34th Avenue, Draft Rezoning Bylaw 2022-03D, presented for first reading. Mr. White, this is you again.
Thank you, Worshipful Council. Administration received an application to rezone a subject parcel at 530234th Ave. from light industrial to heavy industrial.
Thank you.
The subject parcel was originally owned by Valley Power, a former generating station. Metal Neck Salvage Limited acquired the property on November 24, 2021, and are the applicants for this application. The municipal development plan designates this area as heavy industrial on map four of the municipal development plan, so therefore, and it has policies under that section that support this application. There's also an area structure plan called the Northeast Quarter Section 549, Range 7, west of the Fifth, area structure plan, and the proposed development also conforms with this area, which area structure plan, which contemplated commercial light and heavy industrial development in the quarter section. And finally, the land use bylaw, it's, right now, it's designated light industrial, and hence, the proposed use of a salvage yard requires that it be designated heavy industrial in the subject of this application. The bylaw defines heavy industrial as a use that may have effect on safety, use, amenity, or enjoyment of adjacent or nearby sites due to appearance, noise, odor, emissions of contaminants, fire, explosives, hazards, or dangerous goods. Typical development includes abattoirs, concrete plants, wreckage, and salvage yards, and manufacturing and processing facilities that create a nuisance. This proposed draft rezoning will enable the wreckage and salvage yard on the subject property. Administration recommend giving first reading to rezoning bylaw 2022-03-D. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions?
We see there's mention of the West Creek Environmental Reserve there, and, you know, I guess this document talks about an environmental impact assessment. You know, I guess going forward, let's say this gets passed, and they continue to operate there, who, I guess, would be checking on the fact that they have these measures in place and that they're following those going forward?
Counselor Clark, that will likely be a condition of a development permit.
But who is it? Alberta Environment that manages that going forward, or is that the Town of Drayton Valley?
Well, we would initiate it, but it would be, yeah, we'd have to, they would have to hire a consultant to conduct the study, and then it would be submitted to Alberta Environment. And with their approval, we would deem that commission, or that condition met, and approve the development permit.
Just to keep in mind too, council, that this again is an application from Metal Necks to rezone the designated land, and that a development permit will be coming. It is discretionary, the same as the application before, so there'll be an opportunity for referral letters to go out, and those types of letters will be going out. There'll be an opportunity for conditions, if there's any conditions on that development permit, as well as comments and questions and things for when that comes as well to council. Any other questions? Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Counselor Clark?
Okay, I'll make a motion that council give first reading to proposed rezoning bylaw 2022-03-D as presented.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments, questions, or debate on the motion? None, then I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Perfect. Moving on to 8.3, Bylaw Enforcement Officer Bylaw 2022-04P, presented for first reading. Mr. Thompson, this is you.
I'm here this morning to respectfully ask council to consider updating our current bylaw officer, bylaw enforcement officer bylaw, it's a bit of a mouth...
Lots of tongue twisters.
...to bring it into compliance with changes that have been made to the Municipal Government Act. The changes in the new bylaw will align us with the necessary requirements established in Sections 555 and 556 of the Municipal Government Act. The new bylaw specifies the duties and powers of the bylaw enforcement officer, and specifically establishes a code of conduct and disciplinary procedures that are a requirement of the MGA that were not clearly laid out in our old bylaw. Should council approve first reading today, the bylaw will be posted on the Town of Drayton Valley's website for review by the public, and then following that, it will be presented to council for second and third reading. Before we get into any questions, I've brought with me today Cody Rossing, our new CPO officer, who's been working hard on updating a lot of our policies and bylaws, and so he's kind of our technical expert on this, so if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Thank you very much for that. Good morning. Thank you for coming. Are there any questions for administration? Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. So most of this is under the MGA?
Correct.
And is the appeal process part of the MGA as well?
Correct, yes. It has to be outlined in our bylaw.
I understand it has to be. The question I have is that you're giving the CAO the powers, a lot of powers, in regards to disciplinary action. And then if he wants to, if that bylaw officer wants to appeal, it has to go to the person that created the disciplinary action, but back to the CAO, to me, which doesn't make much sense.
So I can answer that one there. So that is correct, how it is worded in there, the appeal would go to the CAO. However, there are provisions of the proposed bylaw that would allow the CAO to delegate the abilities of the bylaw to another member of administration. So, for example, if this bylaw was passed, CAO would be granted the powers to do all the disciplines such as like that. If he decides to delegate that down to Tom, for example, Tom would then make the decision on any disciplinary action, and then that appeal could then go to the CAO. If the CAO didn't delegate those powers, the CAO would make that decision, and then it could go back for an appeal to the CAO. So there are a couple options on that. When it does come to administrative fairness from the Alberta Ombudsman's view, it does come that the final decision is from the CAO. So you could technically bypass, if the CAO did make that decision, the CAO could technically be bypassed at that point, and you could go to the Alberta Ombudsman with kind of the added appeal. They would only be looking at the administrative fairness perspective of it though, so it is a little bit confusing, but there are abilities to change if needed, but...
I appreciate what you're saying. However, for clarity, wouldn't it be easier to put that process in place in the bylaw?
If I could weigh in. So in our organization, of course, the bylaw officer doesn't report to the CAO, so the authority for discipline would be delegated to the appropriate person. However, likely the issue is that the MGA provides for subdelegation, so if council delegates an authority to me as the CAO, I can subdelegate many of those authorities. But what doesn't exist in most of the MGA is the ability for council to delegate an authority below the CAO. So it's a step to go through, just a procedural piece.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for administration? Tom, go ahead.
Two questions. Who's all involved in writing this new bylaw? It would be, so just general, and then I assume we fan out and look at other communities. And then the second thing is that, what would we see, at some point, we may see the major changes that are being expressed, that are different from what we had before? So, Cole's notes.
Yeah, so in the creation of this bylaw, I created the bylaw, which Tom reviewed there. When creating the bylaw, I referenced seven or eight different municipalities of different sizes, of what's everyone else doing kind of thing, what have we done in the past, what are our neighbors doing, and kind of larger places kind of thing, right? And the second part to that, I don't remember what you said.
Was just an overview of it?
Oh.
Of the changes.
So, big picture of it is, it's kind of taking what the MGA requires the municipality have. Our current bylaw enforcement officer bylaw kind of touches a little bit on it, but we clearly define what is going to go on with that. In addition to that, it does also expand on different things. So the MGA, for example, talks about how before commencing duties, bylaw enforcement officer is required to do an oath of office. Under our current bylaw, it doesn't talk about anything like that. So it just more clearly defines all that kind of stuff, kind of lays it out, so if someone new comes into a bylaw enforcement officer position, or a CAO position kind of thing, they open up this bylaw. Everything related to it is kind of in one, so you're not back and forth to numerous different places. In addition to that, it's also starting to build in things where you don't normally see it, because most bylaw enforcement officer bylaws in Alberta haven't been changed in quite some time, but you're starting to see changes in different legislation, such as the Provincial Offenses and Procedures Act, where the ability to actually write a violation ticket, you need to be delegated powers by a municipality, for example, to do that. So instead of having to come in front of council every time we get a new officer that we need these 10 different delegations kind of thing, right? It's now starting to put that administrative burden onto administration kind of thing.
Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. Just for, again, this is only specifically to bylaw, which wouldn't include yourself, Clark.
Yes and no. So it is a bylaw enforcement officer bylaw, which is specific to individuals who are acting in a bylaw enforcement officer capacity. Myself specifically, I am duly appointed as a bylaw enforcement officer and as a community peace officer. Now, when it comes to disciplinary, or any appeals or anything with that, when it comes to community peace officer duties, that falls under something else. So this is specific to duties as a bylaw enforcement officer only.
Counselor Gomano?
Thank you. Again, I'm trying to understand what I'm reading here is accurate. So prior to this bylaw, if there is a bylaw enforcement officer or a peace officer, that individual is recruited by the town and will come to the council, and council appoints that person. So now, what we are doing with this bylaw is that we are designating a number of positions from the council through the bylaw, and then the appointment will be done by the CAO instead of coming to the council.
That's correct. That is consistent as well with what everyone I've read, when it comes to bylaw enforcement officer bylaws, that is consistent with everyone else, is those duties are delegated down to administration to do kind of thing.
And that's also more in line with Municipal Government Act as well.
One more, Tom, go ahead.
Final, are you working now? And then I, I'm interested too, if you've already been in contact with the County of Brazu and their enforcement folks.
Absolutely. As soon as I get appointment from the province, I will be in uniform. You will no longer see me in civilian clothing, so the answer to that is no. I was just in conversation with them yesterday, they are still working on it, so no timelines are given. I'm hopeful within the next week, but who knows? And to the second point, I have been in contact with Brazo County's Enforcement Services Department even prior to myself. even prior to myself coming to Drayton Valley. I've talked with them and met with them at conferences and stuff like that. So it's not a new relationship between the town and Brazos County when it comes to enforcement services, so.
Abila?
Thank you. Just for clarity again, so how are we used to do before and versus now? Is it some municipalities do that and some do this? Or is it that we were doing something we shouldn't be doing before and this is the right way?
As it comes to like the delegating.
Delegating.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's not required that it has to go to administration or that it has to go to council. However, it just does fall in line a lot more with what is the normal practice of other areas is to go to just these kind of powers to be delegated down to administration. Benefit of that, for example, is say I started tomorrow as a bylaw enforcement officer. If there's not another council meeting for another month or two, right? I can't do anything in a bylaw enforcement officer capacity until I get to come to council for that delegation. Where if that's put on to the CAO or designate kind of thing, your first day, that's part of, part of your orientation package kind of thing is you're now getting that delegation so you can get boots on the ground, get going kind of thing, so.
Thank you. Rob, go ahead.
I, in reviewing these, I, I know that in some places our practice would have been different. I think the big difference is probably just the intervening amount of time. So this bylaw hasn't been substantially reviewed in 17 years. But at the time, it would have been based on bylaws that had been standing even longer than that. So I think it's just as, as there is a practice across municipalities where we try to make sure that administrative tasks get funneled to administration. It's assumed that if council approves a bylaw enforcement officer position, that the intent then would be for them to work as a bylaw enforcement officer. And so the appointment into that role just becomes a matter of sequence and formality rather than a decision of council. I think that's what, what we're seeing. The majority of the changes here, that's what I see.
Any other questions? Bill, go ahead.
A motion.
You're going to make a motion? Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome. I move that council give first reading to the proposed bylaw enforcement officer bylaw 2022-04P.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any comments, question or debate on the motion? Just a comment, I want to thank you for coming and providing clarity. You seem to be very knowledgeable with the bylaw and just very excited to see you out there in your uniform, boots on the ground and yeah, being a presence in our community. So thank you both. Any other comments? No, the motion is that council give first reading to the proposed bylaw enforcement officer bylaw 2022-04P. I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. I think before we move on to 8.4, we will call a quick 10 minute break. Meeting back to order at 10:28 a.m. And we will move along the agenda into 8.4, road closure request, annual Drayton Valley triathlon, May 7, 2022. Mr. Starnes, thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship, councillors. As Sharon had mentioned in her delegation, the Drayton Valley Triathlon Organizing Committee has requested some road closures. The, for the cycling portion of the triathlon, there's rules set forth by Alberta Triathlon Association and our walkways and pathways aren't wide enough or even enough so to allow for the cyclists to have their own lanes crossing, going back and forth. So we do need to use the roadways. The committee is requesting council to authorize temporary road closures immediately surrounding the Rotary Park and additional roads that are utilized by participants, spectators and volunteers for the bike and run routes which are attached. And the closures would be from Saturday, May 7 at around 7 a.m. to approximately 3 p.m. The noted roads are listed there. I know Shauna with safety was a part of these and she went through with Owen and Owen had a couple of comments that we think we've taken care of. So yeah, the implications is obviously with road closures, there will be minor inconvenience to motor and public on the day of the event for a portion of the day. However, these closures are needed to, for the safety of everyone involved in the triathlon. And the road closure information will be available on the website and would be shared with the residents that it will affect. And there's two possible motions. One is to approve the temporary road closures for the Drayton Valley Triathlon on Saturday, May 7. And the other is to accept the information as information only. Administration is recommending that council approve the temporary road closures for the Drayton Valley Triathlon on Saturday, May 7, 2022, from 7 a.m. to approximately 3 p.m.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Councilor Ballas?
Oh, thank you. So this would involve Public Works, they will set up the road closures? Okay. So we'll incur a little bit of overtime then.
I did want to mention one thing in the delegation package. It says to have the street sweepers for Friday, May 10. It's actually Friday, May 6 that we need them for, obviously. There was a typo there, so.
Good call.
Make sure that was cleared up.
Tom, go ahead.
So Derek, the, the Graham from the Free Press mentioned a team. And it never crossed my mind because I see triathlons as being a single sport where you do all three. So I, is there any validity to that discussion about putting a team in or?
Thanks for asking, Councilor McGee. We aren't actually doing the team race this year. We thought with COVID, when we started planning, the, we weren't sure what the rules would be. Because all the rules we had to follow come from Triathlon Alberta. And they are still, they are still holding back on releasing to full capacities unlike the province. So we didn't want to go too hard and have to cancel and refund everyone. So we don't have a team package this year. And I know we have had, I mean, the Community Services Department has asked about putting a team in for, from the town. We aren't doing that this year, but it would be something we would look at next year just to keep, because we didn't know what the numbers would be and we didn't know how we would be able to handle if, if COVID was still in effect, so.
Okay, that's great. I just, I was going to start training, but.
You're not looking at putting together a council team or? Any other questions? No, is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Council Evans? Thank you.
I'll make the motion that council approved the temporary road closures for the Drayton Valley Triathlon on Saturday, May 7, 2022, from 7 a.m. to approximately 3 p.m. For Rotary Park, 51st Avenue between 49th Street and 48th Street, 52nd Avenue between 49th Street and 48th Street, 48th Street between 51st Avenue and 52nd Avenue. As well, the run bike routes, 48th Street between 52nd Avenue and 55th Avenue, 55th Avenue to Meyer Avenue and 43rd Street, 43rd Street between 55th Avenue and 50th Ave, 50th? Between 43rd Street and Range Road 73. And lastly, Beckett Road between 50th Avenue and 49th Avenue.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any questions, comments or debate on the motion? None? Thank you for that. There is a motion on the floor. I'm very excited that this event is going, going through. Lots of things are happening now, so it's nice to see people are excited to be getting out in the community and participating in things like this. So fantastic to see. I'll ask the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to 8.5, new Aquatic Centre amenity sponsorship rights agreement for approval. This is you. I guess you're not going anywhere.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And so we've been through a few of these before. And so Whitecap Resources has signed an agreement with the hopes of being one of the four naming sponsors for the bleachers. They have signed an agreement for $15,000 for a five year period, which would be a paid, effective the day of signing. And signage would be presented to council at a later date. I don't know if we need to go through all the financials. I think we're all aware of the, the financials and what the sponsorship means moving forward to, to the new aquatic facility. So the possible motion is for council to approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Whitecap Resources as presented. That council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Whitecap Resources with the following recommendations. Or that council accept the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Whitecap Resources as information only. Administration recommends that council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Whitecap Resources as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. Just Derek, you mentioned that from, from the, this time of the signing, did we change that for the others that, from the, from the date of the opening?
Right. So the, the payment will be due at the time of signing.
Right.
But it won't, the actual agreement won't come into effect until the opening of the facility.
Okay.
And we have changed all those with everyone else. So they weren't only getting two years worth if they'd signed it for, before it's open, so.
Excellent.
We did, we did change all those agreements for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion?
I would love to. I would that council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Whitecap Resources Inc. as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any comments, question or debate on the motion? Could you, or do you know the total of sponsorships to date, what that number is? You, we probably have heard it before, but the top of your head, just roughly, do you know what we've contributed?
No, I don't. But we, I, yeah, we did get that last time we had one of these, we did get that information.
Okay, so we have it. I've just forgotten it somewhere.
Next time I come with one of these, I will have all those numbers for you.
No worries. Thank you very much. No other questions? Okay, there is a motion on the table that council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Whitecap Resources Incorporated as presented. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to 8.6, community homelessness discussion. Mr. Osmond?
Thank you very much. Our last item in the decision items today regards the community homelessness forum, a discussion that's been ongoing with a number of organizations within the community to discuss a cohesive and comprehensive approach to addressing homelessness in the community. FCSS had provided funding for the initial facilitation of these meetings. Administration and discussions with the facilitator is looking to wrap these up, but will need additional funds to be able to host our final meetings. Administration is requesting that town council approve the remaining funding at an amount of $5,000.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions for administration? I will ask a question then. So with this request, there was also discussions around once the facilitator was no longer facilitating these groups, that what would be the next steps? Have we reached out to the potential parties that were discussed of what that would look like? And if they'd be willing to take these, take the lead on this?
My apologies. I, I don't know if, how far along that process we've gotten. I know we, we have initiated the conversation with the facilitator. And, and we will be moving into those conversations if we haven't already very shortly.
Perfect, thank you.
Just who are they facilitating?
So there are a large number of groups around the table, ranging from the town FCSS department to community groups like the Helping Hands and the Community Crisis Task Force, as well as a number of government agencies, including Alberta Mental Health. And, and there were, there's a large number of people that are now around the table. So the advantage of these conversations now is that we've, we've got a large number of stakeholders at the table. We've managed to gain some momentum in, in having those conversations talked about how we take our individual pieces and carry them forward together.
And result is to get?
I, at this point, I think what we're looking for is for the facilitator, as he wraps up his contribution, to establish an ongoing group that would continue to meet and work together to coordinate our efforts. So we understand that it's a multi-function approach. There's lots of pieces that are needed to achieve success in addressing homelessness in our community. And so it will take lots of different organizations and people. But it is important that that be done cooperatively and with awareness to the other people that are involved in the solution.
I'm somewhat confused because it seems that we're getting more and more groups addressing this homelessness. And I don't know if we're obtaining any, any positive results. Perhaps Councilor Clark, you can fill us in?
I certainly can. So as a result of the first couple of meetings we've had, we've had, you know, quite a bit of discussion. There's a lot of overlap. There's a lot of, you know, groups that otherwise wouldn't be talking that are talking now. So from that perspective, that's, that's fantastic, I think, because, you know, we've been operating in silos for a very long time with a lot of these things. And, you know, what do we, what we needed, what we're, you know, the point of this was to get those people away from those silos and not necessarily reach out from those silos and step on others' toes or proverbial toes as it is to just promote communication. And then so from that perspective, I think, you know, as a community, we're looking better because, you know, we can, we can say we have these things to offer because we know about them. I think prior to these meetings, there were some people that had no idea what other groups were doing. So, you know, when it, when it comes to funding and those sorts of things, I think we just look that much better as a community.
Yeah, I know previous conversations you were discussing that. So all the groups that are involved in trying to assist the homeless people, they're the ones that are working with the facilitator. They're all incorporated in this group.
Yeah, so there, there's a whole bunch of groups. There's, you know, Warming Hearts is involved. But we've, you know, part of what's actually come of this too is, you know, we're looking at the reactive side of things, right? We've had some groups come in that started looking, or that look at the proactive side of things. So kids, those that are at risk, let's stop them from getting to the point where they are homeless or addicted to drugs or, you know, those sorts of things. So this has opened a, you know, a few more doors with respect to homelessness in town poverty. So, you know, it's not just a, you know, Warming Hearts just does their thing and, and, you know, it's good. We have a whole bunch of other things going on as well that are, you know, complementary to each other. So, you know, and we've also engaged the mustard seed at Edmonton. They're professionals at this. I'd suggest there aren't too, too many professionals in Drayton Valley. And nor do we want to be, right? So I think from that perspective as well, you know, when we're engaging those professionals, we're better in the long run.
Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. Just from my understanding, who's the, who's the facilitator and, and you know, what's their background? Of course, like any other, I'm hearing different feedback about that.
Okay, Rick, what is Rick's last name? Anderson, yes. So Rick is a facilitator. He has tons of experience with respect to governmental, intergovernmental, interagency type of facilitation. He has conflict management background. So when it comes to this group, because there is, you know, it's called some angst among the group. You know, that's been fantastic because we've been able to bring these people to the table that initially said they weren't going to. So from that perspective, I think he's been invaluable. You know, and of course, you know, after the meeting is where the real conversations happen. And you do, you know, you do get some feedback negative, but I mean, everybody's still coming back to the table, so.
Another question?
Oh, I'm just going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, sure.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that council contributes $5,000 to the community homelessness discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions, comment or debate on the motion? I'll just make a comment that, yeah, I would agree that we've definitely progressed forward when it comes to getting the groups in your we've definitely progressed forward when it comes to getting the groups and your organizations together that are addressing or trying to address the homelessness and poverty reduction in our community. I think that a lot of them, like Councilor Clark had said, weren't willing, I think, at the beginning to maybe come to the table together. So it's nice to see that people are collaborating together. There's conversations that are happening at this meeting where people are actually now partnering with other groups and organizations. Oh, I didn't know that about you and this, I didn't know this about you and how do we work together? And we have, you know, everybody from different sectors there. You have, yeah, you have Warming Hearts, you have the town, you have Opportunity Home, the Food Bank, the RCMP, like, and it's growing and growing every meeting. And I think that it's important that we don't lose that momentum. We want to make sure that people aren't overlapping, they're not competing, that, you know, we're all continuing to move in that same direction and and take care of the residents of our community. And I really see that happening over the last few meetings. I know that with the facilitator comes a cost, so it it'll be nice to kind of, you know, get through the next two meetings to make sure that the people are continuing to come to the table. But then I feel confident that there'll be another group or organization, there was discussion that maybe the library, because the library is an interagency. So they would be more of a neutral, a neutral facilitator to still have the groups come together because we don't want to lose that momentum that's already built and then, you know, go backwards. We feel like we're moving forward and we've got everybody kind of going in the same direction. So, yeah, just excited. I'm in favor of the motion and excited to see where where the community heads with all the ideas and the brainstorming. There's been so many amazing ideas that have come to the table at these groups. So it's nice to see that, you know, everybody cares and and we're all moving forward there. So, yeah, definitely I'm in favor. There is a motion on the table that council contributes $5,000 to the community homelessness discussion. I'll ask the question. All in favor? That is carried. Perfect. And we'll move on to our last decision item, eight point seven arbitration. Did you want to start this, Bill?
Yeah. The only thing that I want to discuss about arbitration is that perhaps have council look at a position where we make a motion to instruct our administration to send a letter to the Minister of Municipal Affairs, our position stating that we're prepared and ready to sign the ICF. But it's not our fault that we can't meet the deadline. You know, just make them advise and have it on record that we're are ready. There's others that are not.
So we have sent a letter to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. We have sent that letter stating that exactly that we're willing to to sign the ICF and we're not going to meet that deadline because of our parties have not signed that. I've also reached out to Mark Smith and Mark Smith had a discussion with Minister MacGyver. And we didn't think at the beginning that they had the capacity to appeal the decision, but there is the capacity. Apparently, there is a clause that speaks to the ability to have a judicial review of the decision. So we've just found that out. The minister is aware that that the letter has been sent and received it and that we're taking steps that to move in the next direction.
Appreciate what's been done, but we don't, we have nothing on record stating that that's been our position and that's what we've done. And I would like to have that on in our minutes stating this is what we've have done or are going to do.
Mr. Osmond?
So if I understand that what you're looking for is something in our minutes that clarifies that we sent that letter. So you understand, okay.
So there would be, now there would be, it would be in our minutes as Sabina's keeping track. So there would be in our minutes stating that the letter has been sent to the minister and there's been discussions with our MLA as to whether there was capacity to appeal the decision. So that would be in today's regular council. Are you looking for an addition motion or a different?
So if I could clarify, the minutes are only going to reflect the motions made?
So it won't?
So it reflects the conversation?
Even though it was decision item as an addition?
Correct. So your your minutes are just going to reflect the motion. What council could do as a motion is to accept the discussion around the arbitration with Brazu County and the minister, the letter we sent to Minister MacGyver for information. And then that motion would capture the content of the discussion.
Oh, let's put your mic on. Counselor Ballas?
Yeah, I would certainly like to make that motion as suggested by our chief administration, administrative officer. And perhaps you could make that too, Sabina, so she could get that.
Great. So my understanding is that Counselor Ballas wishes to make a motion that the discussion around the arbitration with Brazu County and the letter sent to Minister MacGyver regarding the difficulties the town is experiencing in finalizing the ICF with Brazu County be accepted for information.
Well spoken, Mr. Ballas.
Wow, perfect. Thank you for that. So there are there any comments, question or debate on the motion?
Just.
Sir Gomana, I'll go first.
Thank you. Just a clarification. So about the ICF deadline we are fast approaching, has there been any information back from the Municipal Affairs? What's going to happen and what we need to do?
So the deadline for the ICF is April 1st. So we sent our letter to Minister MacGyver explaining that although we had every intention of meeting that deadline, that our partner had not engaged in finalizing that documentation. In fact, by the time that letter was ready to go out, we had received information from the county about their intention to appeal the decision. I have had conversations with Michael Scheidel of Municipal Affairs regarding kind of what next steps might look like in that type of context. But essentially, there are some legal proceedings that have to to move ahead. So we'll, we'll see where those go from there. I can provide some additional comment on the the proceedings that we'll go through in the next few weeks in camera, if you like.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. The the other other piece is that, yes, we've communicated with Municipal Affairs and, you know, we are doing all that. But is there any appetite for the council, for us to, you know, give the position where we are to the community as well at some point? Like, you know, all these, I don't know, these emails that we are sending is from from council to the Municipal Affairs, but there's no.
You're asking for a statement to the community?
Community, exactly, at some point.
What have we done so far for communications or sent out? Have we sent one since the arbitration appeal decision has been released?
I don't believe that there's been any further public communication. I think it it might, it might be worth it for us to review in the GMP the the kind of the process we're in with regards to the county's appeal documents. And then council can determine if they'd like to make a public statement.
Sure, that sounds good. Deputy Mayor McGee, did you have something?
Just to, and you may want to address it close, but I think it's a reasonable question to ask is, are we incurring any legal costs with an appeal?
So, yes, the the town is incurring costs, both to respond to the the county's filings as well as any proceedings that go forward. We have legal representation in these matters and and there are costs that will be attributed to us. The big difference would be that in a, in an arbitration hearing, there is a mechanism defined in the Municipal Government Act about how costs of arbitration will be shared. And that clause doesn't apply in the procedure going forward from here. So we have our legal costs and and that's the the sum total.
It would seem to me that whenever we, some of the other proceedings that I've known and not been necessarily involved but watched is that the, if you decide to go down the appeal route, that is entirely at your cost and and the cost to whoever gets engaged in that. So you're saying, no, that's not the case with arbitration and the appeal?
Certainly not initially. Though there'll be legal costs for us to have representation through the process. There may be an opportunity, assuming that there there is a court proceeding, that there could be an application for costs. But that that would be a fair ways down the line.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion on the table and we will discuss this a little bit further as well in GMP. So I'll ask all in favor of the motion. That is carried. We are out of our decision items and we're moving into our department reports. Planning and growth, Mr. White.
Thank you, worship council. Got four items to talk about today. First is Deer Meadows ASP. We haven't heard anything back from the landowner regarding the negotiation of that utility right away. So I'm gonna have to maybe think about new ways of connecting with this corporation or owner. The second is the HW pickup school update. The contractor has applied for the foundation permit and they have paid the fees in total. So it was a nice check into the bank account. And also, we've also reviewed the costs, upgraded the costs with Alberta Infrastructure on the retention water basin. Attended another North Saskatchewan Association Tac meeting, technical meeting. They presented their setback calculator, which is a GIS tool which incorporates data including fish species, land cover, ESAs, ownership and flood plain, slope, groundwater. And they use all of these data to establish setbacks from from the riverbank. Development continues, very busy, business licenses, development permits. Have, we have completed the 2021 annual internal review for the Safety Codes Council and have submitted that. The shelter pods and the Opportunity Home are now both in the building permit stages. And of course, Metalnecks rezoning, first reading was today. And we're looking at entertaining on April 13th council subdivision application. That concludes the planning report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? I will go to Counselor Clark first.
Ken, this is just with respect to Deer Meadows. I know that property to the north is for sale right now. You could reach out through that Realtor to
Yes.
find out who the contact is.
Do you know who the Realtor is?
Heather Malin.
What's that?
Heather Malin.
Counselor Ballas? You have a question?
Yes. I was just wondering, Ken, if there's a process that we could implement where council members are advised as to what is happening. I'm sitting in a barber's chair yesterday and I'm getting questioned about a liquor store that's going down in the mall where I guess Georges used to be or whatever. I don't know nothing about it.
Interesting. Neither do I. The ones in the malls are a little unique in that they still have to get permits, but, well, I'm thinking about this, because there's been a land use district and permits approved for these malls for commercial uses, anything that fits in there, they have a really easy time moving in. They don't have a lot of hoops to jump through. But they still should, there still should be business license, at least something to give, give me a notice.
But even if we could just be, I don't know how other council members feel, but I I feel that I would like to be informed whether, you know, if it's a confidential matter or something, but it seems that the community knows what's going on next door, but maybe sometimes we don't. And I hate to be blindsided sometimes.
Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're as good as the information we're given, right? And that includes Ken. So, you know, with respect to the cannabis that was next to Nova, we didn't know about that. I had a conversation with somebody who was asking me about it. That's the only way I knew about it, right? So Ken didn't know about it. Nobody else in council knew about it. So I think, again, we're as good as the information we're given, right? So if we're not given that info, tough to, tough to speak to it.
He's got to drive around the the community before he go get your haircut. Counselor Gomana?
No, yeah, in this is, as I understand, you know, didn't go through the town process at all. But I agree with Bill's comments, though, you know, if there's anything, it would be nice to have some kind of update for us, whether how many open permits coming up or any changes or anything like that. If we can create a mechanism for that, that would be excellent.
Yes, I think in the future, when I, when I'm able to delve more deeply into economic development, I'll have a little more inside knowledge.
I think last time you you were in council about Mr. Ballas, you said that, I think it was you or your wife were at the hairdresser and you heard it, heard a rumor. So there's a lot that's happening between the barber and the hairdresser. Maybe that's where we find out what's going on in the community.
Put them on the referral list.
Yep, exactly, right. That'll keep us in the loop. Deputy Mayor McGee, did you have a question?
I I do have. It's interesting that you suggest that we need to find a way to communicate with Deer Meadows. I did have a conversation and if I understood correctly, and you're saying that the, I think they've agreed to go ahead.
I'm talking about the landowner.
Slightly different, right?
Yeah, we were good with Mitch, where we just, we just need to find a conversation with the landowner of that property.
All right.
Listed as a corporation on the title.
Okay, so there's some.
In Saskatchewan.
Okay, and that's what what Counselor Clark referred to.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right, the the other question is the significant number of new business licenses. It would be interesting, because of the questions that were just asked, are we, we're excited. I'm excited if we have new businesses, whatever. It's it's five. If it's one, I'm getting excited, right? So if we could sort of understand that a little bit better, rather than just significant. And the the last piece is around Metalnecks and it's, it's a question about our landfill. Metalnecks, I was down the other day, is open for business. So if I have a fridge and a stove, I normally would put it out at the Pembina River on some lease road. But because it costs too much to go to our landfill. Now, when I take it to Metalnecks, am I getting a return on my investment?
I believe there is some sort of return for, I guess it's, it's their business plan, whatever. Guess you're able to negotiate with them. There may be, yeah, they they may do deals just based on cleanup alone and whatever they clean up, they keep, I, you know.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking that's something that should be out there now because people, you know, instead of paying 40 bucks or whatever it is to go to our landfill, you can actually get 30 bucks from somebody.
They are, they are on the signs. They are advertising on the digital sign.
I was, I was queuing Nathan to make sure that we're beeping all this out. Bleep, bleep.
All right, so that was it. That's my only question. Thank you.
Counselor Evans?
I'm just, just wondering if if Metalnecks is, in fact, taking appliances. Is there anything in their, in their permit that speaks to them having to pull the refrigerant out of those or are we relying on them to follow the provincial requirements for for that?
Yeah, there'll be conditions on their development permit to meet all provincial requirements. My knowledge is limited to just steel. They're dealing with steel and then non-ferrous materials. That's all I know about it. So they, they'll deal with steel and iron on the ferrous side, and then they got copper and other metals that are non-ferrous, and they shred all those up. What they do with, yeah, I'm not sure what they do, would do with any chemicals. They would have to dispose of them as per provincial regulations.
I believe when Deputy Mayor Tom and I had gone for a visit there, just to kind of see, when they were kind of doing the reclamation and everything, there was a discussion around that, how would they, or they would be disposing of that in the permitted ways. And then I think also that there would be a return in, in cash for, you know, any sort of metals and stuff that salvaged and sold to them. I think that's what the, the purpose of the building is. I think once the development permit comes, we'll be able to have some more of those questions answered of to what exactly the business entails, for sure. Any other questions? And we're advising you, don't dump your refrigerators and ovens off on a lease road. Take them to the landfill. Yeah, well, no, I've actually seen that as well, quadding back there and you see a couch and a fridge and you think, you know, how did somebody get a pickup truck out here to dump it? Anyways, thank you very much, Ken. We'll move on to infrastructure and engineering. Owen, this is you.
Morning, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Just to touch quickly on Metalnecks, so they do have a scale at their operation. They do take white goods, they do take scrap metal. They do cut you a check. I mean, obviously, it's dependent on price per ton for the Edmonton scrap salvage market. So that's already there. Good question about the refrigerant, because I know for the landfill, it costs you almost nothing to drop off a fridge if the refrigerant is removed. If it's not, we charge sixty dollars because we get a local contractor to come in to remove the refrigerant. So very good question. So, yeah, absolutely. All right, so as for my division report, utilities, the first pump replacement for Reservoir Two is, well, we're, this is two weeks ago, but it'll be arriving here the end of this week, so we can start rotating the pumps out as council was apprised of earlier. Membrane, membrane inspection will be happening in the first week of April. This is performed yearly to visually inspect the fibers for any signs of excessive fouling, plugging, essentially to get ready for spring, you know, river breakup and all of the basically turbidity of the water. Utility staff are working on cleaning the strainers at the water treatment plant, again, for the same reason, to kind of get ready for the dirty water that'll be coming down the North Saskatchewan River. Since now that's been done. Happy to inform council that myself and Shelley, the utilities manager, got an invitation to Edmonton Convention Center for the Consulting Engineers of Alberta Awards Gala for a submission that I put in last year for a raw water pump station. It's something that happens every year for atypical engineering projects that are definitely not normal. And the raw water pump station is, is definitely that. We took a really different approach on how we tackled it. It was part of an IPD process. That's why I was able to submit it. And so we were told to celebrate a win on April eighth. So I let Mr. Osman know and also the Madam Mayor that somebody can come with me if they would like to be present at that award. So very good news. There is the Canadian Consulting Engineers Magazine, so it'll be putting Drayton on the map. There'll be a nice little blurb about us on the National Magazine. So much like when we got an award for the water treatment plant, we're going to be getting another one for the raw water pump. So very good story for us. Public Works, Public Works is prepping the street sweepers in order to get ready to clean up town streets. Once temperatures remain above zero and all snow and ice dissipate, seeing as how it's going to be plus seventeen today, Public Works will be starting boulevard cleaning and street sweeping on Monday. So obviously, it'll take a bit for the residential streets to kind of get to a more drier state, but we can definitely start on the mains and kind of start doing the needful, getting ready for the triathlon, getting ready for the line painting. As you, as council probably has already seen, we've begun pothole patching now that we're kind of remaining above zero here. So we're kind of addressing complaints as they're coming in and me and the public, Acting Public Works Manager are driving around, making sure we're getting the bad spots and coming up with a program here, just to kind of be a little bit ahead of the game. For engineering, as I said, for line painting RFQ, it's currently out for tender. Closing date is April first, so I'm excited to get some lines on the roads as quick as possible. We signed a framework agreement for the scrap metal and concrete diversion, of which council's already aware of. And if council would like to take a look at a piece of paper that I dropped in front of you, is there. Starting April first, we have a new service provider for the recycling depot. It's, it's going to be a little bit different, but I think it'll be really good. It's going to be encouraging a little bit more of waste diversion and color-coded bins to try to help encourage, incentivize people for putting essentially the recyclables where they should be. The biggest difference that you'll be able to notice is no blue bags can go in the commingled. So that'll be a bit of a change for what our residents are used to from the old recycling depot. But reason for that is, is it makes it cheaper for the municipality for cost, but also it, it encourages residents to try to do their part as much as they can for waste diversion. The biggest thing, the biggest takeaway, especially for the people online listening, is we really want to encourage people to take the glass, not have the glass in the blue bags and put it into the glass bin. Because, I mean, A, not only will it be an added cost to us if the sorting facility has to manually do this, but it's also a safety hazard for them. So this recycling company just really wanted to hammer that home, that we really need to encourage residents to not be putting glass in with the commingled. So very good news. It's a cost savings to the municipality. It gets us to where we should be compared to others for waste diversion recycling. So I think this is kind of one of the first steps in many to try to get there. And again, it's a free service to the public, right, for the recycling depot, so that won't change. Facilities maintenance, they've assisted FCSS with the planning of the shelter pod implementation with the technology and also the installation and setup upon its arrival. So there's a plan for that. He is also assisting the energy coordinator with the energy performance audit for energy conservation, so he's busy with that. And he's still waiting on Fortis with their design engineer to re-energize the outdoor rank across from the Civic Centre. I'm pushing that really hard because this has kind of been a long time in the waiting. It's just kind of sitting in Fortis's hands. But once we can get it re-energized, it'll be better for, you know, any planned events that are around there. We can throw up a couple lighted Christmas trees over yonder across from the Civic Centre, so that'll be good. It's just unfortunately, Fortis isn't exactly the most speedious on that one. So, does council have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for Owen? Yes, is that a yes? Tom, go ahead.
Everybody's got water?
Yes.
With the water issue, everybody's on.
Everybody's got water.
I noticed in Edmonton that they, because of runoff, they, they're, they're getting smells and things like that. We, we don't, that doesn't occur for us.
The only complaints about smells that we've gotten is just from our lagoon, which we'll be rectifying this year.
Right, I'm just thinking, straight water quality, they, it's just in the news that they have to boil it or anything, just leave it in your glass, let the smell go away. But anyway, that's, we don't have that issue.
No, no, no.
Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. In regards to the power surge that we had that created the issues, how do you rectify that? Because I assume the fix was not a cheap fix. So how do you rectify that so that it doesn't happen again?
So immediately, having surge suppression on the, on our PLCs for the electric distribution pumps would be the first step. And also with my email to council, once this main distribution upgrade is in place, that problem would have never happened. And then as a phase two, myself and Shelley would probably be coming to council looking for some financial investment to upgrade the reservoir building, just because there's a lot of factors that led to that, you know, no backup gen set, antiquated fire pump that has to be manually controlled or shut off, and of course, the surge suppression. There hasn't been a lot done with that building in a very long time.
So that could be a year, a year and a half down the road, right?
Right, yeah.
So is there some temporary measures that we can take? Because, I mean, we're coming into storming seasons.
For sure. Yeah, I've talked to Shelley about looking for surge suppression as, as an immediate fix, just to see what kind of a cost that would be, seeing if we can put it within the budget or if it's something that falls outside of the budget, you know, just depending on kind of what we need there for the fix. I may or may not have to come to council, just for some, not emergency funding, but just some beforehand funding. So as I find out more with Shelley, once she kind of gets some quotes and kind of some, some measures, then I'll price council as it comes.
Thank you. I just have a question on the recycling depot. So now that we have the different containers, is that no blue bags at curbs and are we separating there as well?
So this is where a bit of a hiccup is going to happen. So at the recycling depot, no blue bags, curbside can still do blue bags. I've been working a lot with Ms. Stone as this one is going to be, I can see it being confusing for the public, but also with our contract for roadside and curbside collection up at the end of this year. On April first, I have it set out to be released on APC for re-tendering that contract. And pretty much talking to a lot of waste management companies, that's kind of where we're going to be going anyway, with pretty much any proponent that's going to be bidding on this. So I kind of, myself and Ms. Stone look at this as this is kind of one step to kind of get everybody ready for the curbside change as well.
So we'll be going back to separating at the curb and?
Yeah, because it's, we're a bit behind on that, so that'll be a bit of education for the public to try to get us to where we need to be for environmental and waste diversion.
I'll tell you one thing, they, they change this all the time, what you can recycle, what you can't recycle, what you can put. And I know because we used to have to separate the recyclables and then we went to throwing everything in the bin and
I know.
it'll be, yeah, definitely, we'll have to communicate that very clear, I think, to our residents.
For sure, yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm working very close with Ms. Stone and just hopefully with the residents out there that talks to, you know, your councilship. And just try to give us as much support as you can in order to help try to educate people in the recycling and the importance of.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Moving along the agenda, nine point three, community services and FCSS. Derek?
Thank you. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights that the group had asked me to go through. For FCSS, the Volunteer Appreciation Night banquet will be on April twenty sixth. Tickets will be available to volunteer groups for ten dollars. And the Canada Day twenty twenty two will take place at Rotary Park this year. Details to follow soon. Just wanted to give you some stats for the Omniplex and the Pool. We, the last, I guess, last month, we've been very busy, averaging over fifteen hundred people per week at the fitness centre. That doesn't include walk-ins. And compare that to pre-COVID numbers, we were getting about seven hundred per week, so we're, we're more than double than what we were getting pre-COVID. So people are, are liking that COVID is over and they're coming out and getting to the gym. Not only that, but the Omniplex too, with Thunder doing quite well in playoffs and, well, minor hockey, figure skating, ringettes kind of wrapping up. But between the last few weeks with the playoffs and the carnival and Thunder playoffs and the MCC events and curling bonds bills, we were averaging well over three thousand five hundred per weekend. I know the, the last couple Thunder games, they're getting just about a thousand people compared to two hundred and fifty, three hundred for the regular season, so that's good. That's, that's what a winning team will do. That'll bring people out and support them. At the Pool, I think they're pretty much at capacity for their spring programming now and their spring break programming has been full for quite some time. And then the last thing I wanted to go through, I know council had asked me to do some research about hosting summer and winter games. The youth summer and winter games, as I noted here, they require about fifteen hundred to two thousand volunteers. Right now, what we, one thing we didn't mention with the triathlon, we are, we are struggling to get volunteers. We need around about a hundred and we're not even close to that, so for us to try to round up fifteen hundred to two thousand. Talking to the director of the games, he mentioned that they are looking at changing some of the rules and some of the guidelines for people to host. But he didn't think there would be any changes that they could do for us to allow us, a community of our size, to host those youth games. And we're kind of too far away from any neighboring community to partner with. So having said that, the senior games are the Alberta fifty-five plus games are something that we could maybe take a look at. We need much less volunteers, a hundred to a hundred and fifty we could get away with. But our problem would be lodging, like I think somebody mentioned before the meeting started. Lloydminster Junior Eighteen, they had to stay in Nisku because we just have no places for people to stay. So to bring in three thousand to twenty five, or twenty five hundred to thirty five hundred athletes, parents, spectators, we just don't have the room for that. Also, we don't, we couldn't feed everyone at this point, I don't think. But if there's, I guess, council wants me to pursue that, I definitely can. And if you guys are interested in trying to host Alberta fifty-five plus at some point, then I guess that would be up to me to then look forward to forming a host community committee and to, which might involve one or two of you people and community leaders to maybe get that off the ground. But I just wanted to let council know that I did do some digging and it would be a huge undertaking to do this Alberta fifty-five plus doable, but we would, I think the oil field would have to slow down to allow us to do that, which obviously nobody really wants either, so it's kind of one of those damned if you do, damned if you don't kind of thing. So anyway, that's my report.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions for Mr. Lawrence? Counselor Gannon?
Oh, thank you. No, just about that, Derek. I was wondering, you know, yes, the town is busy right now and we have those challenges, but we go on kind of a cycle every year, right? So we are coming up for the breakup now. I'm not sure when exactly those events are happening. Maybe, maybe in my mind, it's prudent to check with DVHDA or, you know, any organization like that to figure out when is their least occupation, occupied times and see if that fits with any of these events.
Yeah.
Be a way to go.
I, I see what you're saying and for, for these events, it's, it's usually midsummer, August for the summer events, and then winter events are obviously December, January. So that timeline doesn't really work for the breakups, but, and like you said, it comes in, in, in waves, right? Sometimes we're really busy, so it's not something that is definitely off the radar forever, just right now with, with the way it is. It'd be tough for us to convince the, the choosing committee to choose us as, as a host event right now or a host site.
Deputy Mayor McGee?
So are we, is fifty-five plus, nobody's talked to them?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I've been in contact with them.
With our folks here?
With our folks here. No, I haven't talked to our local group about whether there's an interest in hosting something like this.
Right, and is this, is this request on a summer games or a winter game?
Either or. I was, yeah, just, yeah.
So we wouldn't have a clue on, on dates, but it would seem to me if you reached out to fifty-five plus, they probably are looking to try to energize their, their community now coming out of COVID, that they might be quite interested and we could assist in that. That would be my first logical step is to ask them.
To build up our room within our
Yeah, yeah, but ask them if they're interested, because they would be the lead group in my mind. And they are probably associated with the Association of Fifty-Five Plus.
I would assume so.
Good questions. One more question. Where are we at with the SBG and the Fight Commission or the Planned Fight? Is that still on go?
Hi, yeah, thanks for asking, Mayor Dodd. Yeah, so I talked to Brad or was texting with Brad last week. He was waiting for some information from the Grand Prairie contact. He said he had been having troubles getting ahold of her, but he had actually touched base. She said she had some information for him. As far as I know, we're still on track for the June seventeenth event. So, yeah, I know he had touched base with her and that she was getting him information, whether he's got that yet or not. I'm not sure. I texted him, I believe, yesterday or today, even this morning, to see if he received that yet. And I haven't heard, but I know she did reply to him and she did respond since he had said he hadn't heard from her for a while, so we're still on track.
Perfect. Glad to hear. Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. Just in regards to number five, where it says Pembina Crisis Connection Society has moved into an office space within the Civic Centre?
Yes, so council will remember that there was, back in the fall, a discussion Uh, yes, so, uh, council will remember that there was, uh, back in the fall, a discussion uh, about having the Pembina Crisis, um, uh, Connection Society, uh, occupy some space at the, uh, new Public Works building. Um, after, uh, looking at, uh, needs and opportunities, we decided that, uh, a better space to host them would be here in this building. Uh, so they've got a, the office, uh, on the far side of the front counter. Um, uh, is set up for them there. Uh, and, uh, the food bank, um, is, uh, now putting together some information for us uh, on their expansion designs, uh, for the, the building down at Rotary Park.
So that gives them access to this building once per hour a day?
Uh, they have access to this building, y- yes.
Not after hours though, right?
Uh, for meetings, uh, they have some evening meetings of their board, uh, and they use, uh, it for that.
Tom?
So, and I, I'm, I'm maybe thinking, um, of what you're thinking about is that they, they, we're not getting people coming into the door in crisis. Um, that, that's not what they do. They're actually more of a information, um, group that would, uh, have information available. So you're, you're not going to see somebody coming in the pool in the morning in crisis, is, is what I'm told.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, I maybe misunderstood the question. So, yeah, their office is here and they often do during business hours have, uh, people come in. Uh, but their business model is not something that requires them twenty-four hours for, um, clients and people they're working with. Their only after-hours, uh, access to the building is for their board meetings.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to nine point four, economic development. Ms. Stone.
Good morning, counsel. I'll start with Ekdev. Uh, so as you know, Marie Lynn is, uh, new to the organization and she's kind of hit the ground running and she's been able to, uh, make some business visitations already. Um, unfortunately, she's out with a sick kid for, for the rest of the week. So we, um, but, uh, what she has done has been able to start the process. We're also, uh, developing like a big spreadsheet to keep track of everybody that we're connecting with. We're asking some specific questions of them and keeping track of that feedback. And then also, I think council had brought up a few weeks ago that it would be nice if we had a mechanism to track how long some of these businesses have been in operation in Drayton Valley. So we're looking at doing that as well. So we're, um, we're hoping to get some of that information when we're out visiting. Uh, we're also setting up, um, visitations with Mayor Dodds to go out and see new businesses. Um, as we've talked about this morning, we have a number that have opened up in the last two years. So we're doing one tomorrow, I believe, and then I.
We're still doing it?
I'm gonna go with you.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we're gonna go. And, uh, so we're gonna continue with that. So that's really exciting and it's, so I'm happy to see a lot of these things starting to move forward. On the education side, um, as you'll know, our, um, press release with, uh, announcing Olds College went out on the fourteenth. And, um, the international student recruitment with Everest is now underway. So we're really excited to get that going forward and welcoming new students probably in the fall. Community registration night was Monday, I believe. So, uh, Tanya was there, uh, handing out information about zero fee tuition. And also on Friday is going to be our first education committee meeting. So we're excited to get that underway as well. And, um, I think Mayor Dodds, you were with, uh, some of our healthcare aid students when the, the U of A team came in to, um, start interviewing them. It's part of this accelerator program that we're doing. We're trying to identify if there's any, um, additional workshops or training options that these, uh, students can get that would make them enhance their employability. Um, so that's going on with U of A. So that's awesome to see underway. And with energy, Aisha has been, um, the, the RFP was released for the, um, for that energy audit. And I believe this week or last week, she was going around with, uh, some of the, um, and doing some site visits with them. So that's going. Uh, we had our first sustainability committee meeting on Monday. So we're going to move forward with, um, identifying some members at large, reading, reaching out to those folks and, and moving forward with those projects. And as council is aware, our food cycler project is, um, it's open for registrants until today at two P M. And I believe I should just send out a reminder if anybody on council wants a food cycler, we need to know right away. And, um, so we'll be getting those out, uh, to the rest of the public, uh, right away. Um, so those are kind of the highlights. If council has any questions.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any questions? Tom, go ahead.
One of the things, uh, that, uh, I've been doing of interest is to think about seniors. And, um, I happened to, uh, get the Shangri-La Lodge C A O and, uh, and the facility director to meet with, uh, the Seasons over at Seasons. And so in that discussion yesterday afternoon, it came up that we've created a bit of a crisis. Zero tuition. And the reason that we've created that is because what they had is they had a number of their staff who wanted to get on and learn more and get educated. They had to, their choices were to quit and take the course or not. And some of them quit, uh, to take this course because it's zero tuition, uh, it's a great opportunity for them. And we had the, their LPN was tagged for teaching. So they lost their LPN. So huge issue for them. Um, and, uh, so, uh, in, after reflecting on it, uh, the discussion went on to, is there ways that we could be doing evening courses for those kinds of things? And, and I just want you to know that they raised that. And I think it's important that if we may want to consider it because of, of the issues that they face. And so people can stay working, get the zero tuition, take the courses. So just to, for us to trigger. So unbeknownst to us, we created that. It's a wonderful thing all the way around, uh, but, uh, the, right now recruitment for, for those kinds of positions. Points West needs folks, Shangri-La needs folks, um, Seasons needs folks. So we're, we're on the cusp. We just need to keep.
Yeah, for sure. We are aware that that has, um, been the case with some of our students coming in, that they have, you know, some of their, uh, work commitments, what that kind of looks like and how that has affected, uh, some of the employers in the town. Um, to your question about the evening things, that's something that is on our radar and we're working towards. Um, we'll see where that goes. We'll update council as some of those opportunities come forward. But we're definitely aware that it's caused some angst.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to nine point five, protective and emergency services. Mr. Thompson?
Good morning, council again.
Good morning.
I have no formal report from council unless council has any questions of me.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah. Busy with the bylaw this, this time around.
Wow, okay. Are there any, any questions for Tom? Oh, Mila, good question.
I guess I'll have a question just, just, uh, because of what, what happened. We can answer, uh, the surge and, and water issues and all that. So when something like that happens, how does that affect what you do? And, um, what's, what's our, I, I guess, process in that sense?
Um, there's, there's not a real impact to, to, to us. Um, it's just pretty much business as usual. Um, obviously, we are in communication with other departments, uh, when stuff, stuff happens. But for the most part, it's business as usual.
Do I have to go to the barber to find out what happened? So I'm not sure what happened.
Oh, yeah, the water issue.
Yeah, well, perfect. Thank you very much. We look forward to, uh, your next month's report. Uh, nine point six, uh, corporate services and finance. Ms. Thompson?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I didn't have a report to s- submit. I missed the deadline, but I do have a couple items to report. So this week, we started our full-time asset management project. So, uh, Ken and Leah are at the back, working on it full-time. So if you want to have a gander, that's where they're at. And they're, they have their, their binders and their maps and their whiteboards out and they're, they're going for it. So we were very excited about the steps that we were taking in that project. Some of the things that Leah is working on this week are the, um, capital asset policy and finishing up the asset management policies, which will hopefully come to council in the next little bit. We're also finalizing our audit. So, uh, any, um, requests that the auditors have as they're wrapping it up, I'm answering them this week. And the presentation should be coming forward on April thirteenth. That is when Phil from Metrics will be presenting the audited financial statements. Uh, we have some I T projects coming up. We're going to start, uh, the, any I T requests to be, uh, going through our ma- maintenance management system citywide, uh, to better, uh, prioritize or to better, um, well, there's many reasons to do it. But one is to prioritize tasks. Um, and then for tracking purposes, we can see how many times, you know, how much time our I T department spends at which facility, which department, how long it takes to respond and all those kinds of things. So we're going to be going down that road here very shortly. And then also developing a service level agreement to say if you have, if your email isn't working, where does that fall on the priority list? What can you expect for response time? Um, compared to, you know, our internet's down and you can't even have customers. So just so that everyone has a better understanding of what to expect from the I T department. There's only two people. So we, we want to make sure that the right things are getting, um, service at the right time. Uh, we're also doing some things at the front desk, uh, always working on improving our customer service. And, and one of the key things there is to make sure that the girls at the front desk actually get the information needed when decisions and things are going on in the background. Sometimes people come in, call, um, and ask the girls questions. And the more information they have, the more information they can give them, um, rather than directing them to other people. So we're working on just making sure, um, the, the communication goes to the front desk. And then, um, we're also wor- working on developing some emergency protocols to make sure that when, uh, anything happens or if anything should happen at the front desk, any, any sort of, um, high-risk situations that they know what to do. Uh, you know, sort of have protocols for different types of situations. If this were to happen, you know, what, what, what would you do? Um, so that they're prepared, uh, God forbid, something happens. We just don't have a very good, uh, protocol right now. So that's, we're working with Shauna and Leah to get that in place. And as well as Nathan, to have a sort of a, some sort of, um, emergency or panic button or some sort of communication that they can quickly do to, to alert someone or everyone in the building about a situation. And then of course, uh, the last and very important thing is that next week I will be starting the, uh, process of preparing our mill rate bylaw. So, uh, that's all that I have to report from finance and corporate services.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counsel Ballas?
Thank you. What's the delay of, I assume, the funds from, uh, the arbitration that was awarded to us? Is that impacting our twenty twenty-two budget?
No, it's not. It's not. So the entirety of those funds were essentially going back into our reserves. And, and we can't really, we, at this point, we're, we have them on our books as receiving that. We will be receiving them. So, but we're not, it's not going to impact the twenty twenty-two budget, um, at this point.
Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to commend you on the, uh, front-end, uh, services. Um, and the example that was given this morning about somebody coming to the front desk looking for some information on the public hearing today, um, that, and, and the front desk not knowing. I think that's, it's really important that where those things are there, that people can go, yep, on it. Here's your paperwork. Way we go, right? So that's, that's great news. Great news.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Moving on to nine point seven, C A O report. Straslin?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I don't have a ton to report this morning. Uh, but I did want to let council know, uh, that, uh, last week, um, we transitioned, uh, our safety officer, uh, Shauna, over to the offices of the C A O. So she reports directly to me. Uh, and with that move, uh, we began, uh, a bunch of, um, refocusing on safety. Uh, so safety, of course, is, uh, paramount in the organization and very important to me. Um, and so I think, uh, it's just a matter of making sure that, that we're living it and not just saying it. Uh, so last week, uh, I did do a fleet inspection. Uh, Shauna and I went out and had a look at all the public, uh, works units. Um, and, uh, I have to say that I'm very, very pleased to report to council that our vehicles are in top-notch shape. Um, there were some concerns that in the past, there might have been some behaviors that were less than ideal in those, uh, vehicles, uh, smoking and things like that. And it's evident that that, uh, that change has stuck, uh, and then been in place for a couple of years now. So our vehicles are nice and clean and in good operating condition. Uh, the other thing that I started with, uh, Shauna was, uh, facility inspections. So we went out and did our first facility together. Uh, so these are in addition to the facility inspections, uh, that are being done as part of our joint health and safety, uh, committee. Um, but it's an opportunity for me to get out, have some more face time with the team, uh, with the message of how important safety is. So we, uh, we spent a morning at the E C D C, uh, going through that building. Uh, and, uh, and again, it was a really positive experience. So just wanted to let you know that, uh, there'll be more of that coming as, uh, as I push to kind of maintain that focus on safety.
Wonderful. Any questions? Rick, go ahead.
Just, uh, just a couple of almost comments really for, uh, as, as far as the front desk goes, if there's a, if there's a desire to, um, present something to them or to the organization in general as far as a threat to the front desk, active shooter, that kind of thing. Um, the, the, I, I believe it was the U of A and I can find the video. Uh, produced a good video of how to respond to that, what to do, uh, for individuals. And if you're, you know, facing that, um, situation. And, uh, as well, I don't know if you're interested, but, uh, um, the I T department over at the county office has a two-button system. One's a, uh, a severe emergency where nine-one-one gets called, it, it just blows out to everybody. And then the second one is just if they're having a troublesome customer, it goes to a select few who can come up and assist. So if, uh, if you or Nathan wants to, wants to give them a call over there. I know it was fairly, uh, cheap to install as well. So just a little bit of help, if you will.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that. I recall when I was at the county as well, then I was there when they had installed those. And, um, there was threats that were being made towards, you know, um, administration and, and councils and things like that. And we had to use the buttons a few times and you had to be careful you didn't get, you were pushing the right button rather than nine-one-one or someone from the department, um, to come and do that. But yeah, very, very advantageous for sure. So thank you very much for that. Um, if there's no other questions, we'll move into our council reports. Deputy Mayor McGee, you are up.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, uh, the, I mentioned it earlier, uh, on, uh, one of the things I'm doing with the Shangri-La and the lodge itself is to go about to, to find out, um, uh, what gaps are missing in, in senior care and what's available at Seasons, what's available at, um, Points West. We're, I, next week, I think we're connecting with Points West. I'm going to go to the ASHA conference, which is in Calgary. Um, and there, I think we're going to have a broader discussion about what other communities are, are doing around senior care. Currently at, um, at the Brazzle, Shangri-La, we have twenty-six vacancies. So something's changed dramatically. We have to figure out how we're going to fill those vacancies. Um, and it probably is going to come to renovations, those kinds of things. Um, but we need to address, uh, I think, a needs assessment. Um, and when I talked to Seasons about that, I didn't ask for anything further than information. But at some point in time, we may want to come together and, and the town and those.
facilities talk about our 10-year plan or 15, 15-year plan. And one of the things that was drawn to my attention is that there's, there's a younger person that's gone into Seasons that wants to start a motor trike club. And so her question to me is, is that, is that going to be a problem? And I thought, well, I don't think so, but we need to be aware of it. So all of a sudden, because they're going to get patches and colors and things like that. So you may see 10 or 12 or 15 scooters going over to Northview and having a picnic and then wheeling back and, and, you know, golf carts, those kinds of things. As we, as we age, those things are going to change. And so I think we need to consider those things and then consider how our roads may be affected and, and what kinds of things we would want to have in place because they're coming. To me, it's really exciting. So just, that's my report.
Well, thank you for that. Very interesting report.
I'm buying one next week.
Yeah, I like it. Thank you very much. Council Ballas?
I have nothing to report at this time, other than I had a fantastic three weeks off.
Wonderful. We're glad that you had some time away and enjoyed some sunshine. Council Gomana?
Thank you. It's fantastic to hear, you know, we are hearing about new courses, students coming to the community, and we are hearing about seniors and old scooters and all of that. So, you know, it's fantastic that these things are happening in our beautiful community. Friday 11th, I was able to attend another Culture Cafe and it was great. She was there. Thank you very much for, I appreciate coming there as well. It's always good to have that connection and talk to the newcomers to our, our community and give them a platform to, to meet and mingle. 15 Economic Development, first meeting. It was good to see all the parties available was there and as well as I think it went well for our first meeting. And now we need to, you know, make the momentum and, and hopefully make something out of our committee there. On the 11th, I had the opportunity to meet with Emily Smith again for the Community Healthcare Committee. I was able to finalize the, the framework of that. Bill, you missed it. You were enjoying nice weather. But I'll, I'll get into more details on the GNP if you have any questions, but it, it's coming along. And we were able to finalize, like I said, the framework and all that and try to move that committee forward as well. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Council Clark?
Yeah, I don't think I have anything further to report. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Council Evans?
Not a lot to update today, but did have a healthy Communities Coalition meeting. They're still struggling with whether to get insurance or not because they don't have any initiatives this year yet. They're just sort of starting to get going again now that things have opened up and now that, excuse me, now that the province is, is opening up their offices, et cetera, they are looking at pushing an initiative for men's mental health. So they're just kind of putting that together, what it looks like. They're gathering a little feedback, you know, how they can get the word out there that it is a concern and, and where us men can get some, some help for mental health issues. So that was interesting to see. Of course, this all came up, the one meeting that I missed. So I was just getting caught up at this meeting as to far as, as far as what they were doing. And then lastly, because I felt like I haven't been contributing a ton to them, you know, it's all sort of FCSS groups that are going over sort of what they're doing and what's coming up. I did volunteer to submit their, their financial papers, put them together so they can keep their, I, I believe it's society status. Anyway, their current status. They need to submit the latest year's finances. So I'll get together with Lola. It looks pretty straightforward. They just needed someone who wasn't a director to do it. So yeah, I guess that's about it for me.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Council Sheriffs?
So I have a few updates. I attended the Sustainability Committee was the first one, and that was quite interesting. We were talking about some of the plans and commitments. Looking forward to Dr. Anger's visit to update us on the RISE project and where it's going. And we're gonna have lunch tomorrow at Mr. Mike's. The Globe Forum is coming up, so I'm excited about that. I believe Councilor Ballas and I registered for online, the Globe Forum. Yep. So, sorry? Yes, yeah, it's coming right up. And then my daughter and her friend gave me a short notice. They wanted to do a quick little presentation about what they've been up to lately. And they asked if they can come in front of the Council. So whenever we have a few minutes, I said, I'll see what I can do. And that's good.
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Well, welcome to Council. I think we're probably just gonna wrap up our reports here and then we'll, we'll probably break for lunch and then move into GNP. And that would be an opportunity for you to come and do your presentation for us, too. So once we're over, we'll, little chit chat a little bit here in a few minutes with you. So my report is I attended the Municipal Leaders Caucus. I had caught the last day there. Always, I think, important to be, just, I think, talking to other municipalities and hearing what everybody's doing and things like that. It's nice that we're able to meet face-to-face again rather than online. So I think people are enjoying it and just hearing how other municipalities have navigated through COVID and what they're dealing with now. Homelessness seems to be, you know, the talk and the economy booming again is another thing that people are, you know, quite happy to see that we've come back out of this recession and things are starting to progress forward. We had a meeting with Warehouser. We had lunch with the president of Warehouser. It was a very interesting meeting. Enjoyed that very much. Looking forward to the next time that we'll be able to catch up. They had proposed they would like to start coming to maybe on a quarterly basis to our GNP meetings, just to give updates and for any questions and just to, just, I guess, to communicate how integral they are really to our community and that, you know, through all of this, the last couple of years, that they've still been going strong and that they employ over, I think, I think it's over 500 employees that they have at Warehouser there. And so, I mean, that trickles down into the community. So as, as we were going through these difficult times, they were still able to, you know, navigate strongly through it and, you know, put food on the table for a lot of families. So that's, it's, you know, very interesting and, and a good reminder to know that that's happening in our community. I did attend the Culture Cafe as Council Gomana said, I enjoyed that very, very much. It's nice. I'll go again. It's nice to see, yeah, the newcomers in the community. And I had an opportunity to listen to, to a presentation there and learn a little bit about some tips about public speaking and how often I say the word "um" in between when I'm talking. And I don't know if I'll ever get rid of it. It's my, it's kind of my safe word when I'm, or my thinking. I like to go "um" to get to my next point. But yeah, learned a few cute little tips and techniques. So it was very interesting. Had a couple of meetings with Maria from the U of A. It's always nice to be engaging with her. I had lunch with her in Edmonton after the Municipal Leaders Caucus, just to have a little bit of update of what's happening behind the scenes with them. And then also when she had came out here just to talk about the future skills and potential money that they're wanting to put towards the zero fee, that they find this absolutely, you know, amazing. And the Future Skills Project, that's the one that we were the recipient of the, the grant, are wanting to give more money. So whether that money will go into the, the tuition pile for the students or just for certain programs and things like that. So it's nice to hear that we've got the support and that partnership with them. And then, yeah, so just continuing for me to get out to the new businesses that are in town, congratulating them on their opening and meet the owners and things like that. And that's something that I'll be continuing to do. We have a lot of catching up to do. New businesses seem to be opening all the time. So very exciting. There's also going to be a Mayor's Coffee coming up in April. Councilor Clark will be attending that with me. That will be at the White Bowl. And then the next one will be at the 55-plus Club. And Rick had volunteered to go with me. So very exciting. Nice to be getting out and engaging with the community. So I welcome everybody to, to kind of come or tell everybody, this is your opportunity to come and ask questions, concerns, or just, you know, celebrate whatever's happening in the community. So I think that these will be a, a great way to engage going forward and for the years to come. So if anybody has any input and everything towards them, I think it's good to hear what everybody else's feedback is as well. So that is it for me. And we will move into our information items. 11.1 Childcare Operational Board Meeting Minutes, October 14th, 2021. 11.2 Drayton Valley and District Chamber of Commerce Meeting Minutes, January 27th, 2022. 11.3 Drayton Valley RCMP Stats, February 2022. Could I get a motion to accept these as information? Council Sheriffs, all in favor? That is carried and we will adjourn the meeting at 11:55 AM.